Twenty first, twenty twenty three, meeting of the Land Use Committee. Special meeting of the Land Use Committee will come to order. It is two P M. I'm Dan Strauss, Chair of the Committee. Will the clerk please call the roll? And before you do so, Council members Morales and Mosgada have been excused.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Chair Strauss?
Present.
Three present.
Thank you. We only have one item on the agenda today as part of our tree ordinance hearing schedule. It's Council Bill one, two, zero, five, three, four, briefing and discussion on the tree protections bill. We have about two weeks left in hearing the tree legislation and land use committee. We have updated the tree hearing schedule. I'm hearing a little bit of echo. Let's see if that changes there. We updated the hearing schedule and are going to be using the May fourth time in committee. Because of the number of amendments that have been put forward, we're actually going to extend that meeting. And clerk, I'm still hearing quite a bit of echo. I don't know if Councilmember Peterson, are you hearing an echo or is that just on my end?
No, no.
Okay.
Just kidding. No, I wasn't. I was just joking. No, I'm not hearing an echo.
That's right. No, 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 no. Thank you. Back to the seriousness. We've updated and we will be using the May fourth date. We've actually scheduled a, an additional special land use committee for that afternoon in case we run out of time. As staff has let me know regarding the number of amendments, there's about a hundred and twenty hours worth of staff work that are required to meet what we have requested of them. So just for your calendars and I'll verbally bring this up. So today is April twenty first. We're going to vote on the substitute bill. The, these are technical cleanups. We'll get into that conversation, council members. If you are uncomfortable with any parts of the substitute, you can verbally remove them. On Monday at ten thirty A M., we will have a public hearing. There will be no committee action. We're just here to listen to the public. All public will have two minutes to vote. Councilmember Nelson, can I get through this or do you want? Yeah, then I'll come right back to you. On April twenty sixth, we are going to vote on the first round of amendments. We will be public about which section that is. And then on May fourth, we're going to hear and vote on the amendments during the morning session. If we are able to get through that, we will vote it out of committee in the morning session. If we are not, we will select to use the afternoon session as well, with the desire to vote that bill out of committee that afternoon. May ninth, the following Tuesday would be the day that it is held in full city council for final action. If we vote the bill out in the afternoon of May fourth, we will either need to suspend the rules or have final action on May sixteenth, because there is a Thursday noon deadline for legislation coming out of committee to be heard at that following Tuesday. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a heads up that I will be abstaining from votes today just because we got the substitute yesterday afternoon and it was going to be, you know, there are some substantive things on here. And if it, if some members want to maybe remove things, it seems like there might be some controversy or, I don't know. But I have not had the time to, I'm just not prepared to vote. So I just, I'll be listening intently, but not voting today.
Great. And hopefully the presentation might sway you to understand that these are all technical fixes. And if Councilmember Peterson has concerns with any of this, Councilmember Peterson, you are free, as we discussed yesterday, free to pull anything out of us that you want. This is intended to be non-controversial and technical in nature. So hopefully we'll earn your support today, Councilmember Nelson. The substitute bill and the table with other proposed amendments is attached to the agenda. In looking at this table, I realized two things. One, some of the amendments listed under my name here, I may not be bringing forward. And two, the second thing is that some of the amendments I flagged on my list with additional questions did not end up on this list. So we will be updating that as soon as possible. Before we begin, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. And at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period for items on today's agenda. We will be having in-person public comment first, followed by online public comment. I see only Chris Gall, Patrick Taylor, Amanda Galberth, Alicia Ruiz, and Sandy Shetler are present online. If you did not hear your name called just now, you need to call the link, the number that you received in the R S V P, not the council listen line. So with that, clerk, if you could play the video.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the coast sailors peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting I D. and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting I D. is different from the general listen line meeting I D. provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, the host would like you to unmute your microphone. That is your cue, that is your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You would then hear a prompt of, you are unmuted. Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when ten seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, you have been unmuted. Thank you, Seattle.
Thank you. And Mr. G., I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I'm sorry. There was a mistake with the, with the script going out with the incorrect numbers. You may want to have the callers who are not called yet to review their emails. An updated script has been sent.
Great, thank you for the viewing public. There is a new email in your inbox now if you have called for virtual public comment. Eric Armbr, I'm going to read the names of people who are not present at this time so that you can check your email. Eric Armbruster, Keith Hammer, David Neiman, Steve Zemke, Keith Hammer, and Jessica Dixon. Please do check your email at this time. We'll try to stall a little bit to make sure that you got the time you need to get online. We have in person today Kathleen Kirkoff, Michael Oxman, Sienna and Ianna Parret, David Glogger, and Steve Rubstelo. Please, Kathleen, welcome. And we'll, let's see, we've got fifteen, twenty. We're going to do a minute thirty seconds. We're going to add a little bit of time. And next week at the public hearing, we will have two minutes per person.
One minute. Okay, I want to say that I support the recommendations of the Urban Forestry Commission. This is why they were created. There are avenue as citizens of being able to have input. And I'm very upset that they were not included in the creation of this new addition of the tree ordinance. Specifically, as far as things that are in the tree ordinance that I do not support is the guaranteed eighty-five percent lot coverage. I think that we should take a look at Portland, who has done multiple multifamily housing zoning. And they found after two years that they were losing trees at a rapid rate and they changed their tree ordinance to allow twenty percent in multifamily zones and forty percent non-covered area in the one to four residential zoning. And I think we should learn from other people's mistakes rather than keep making the same mistakes and suffering the same consequences. I think that's the wise thing to do. So this is complicated. Thank you. And I do feel that this whole process has been very rushed to give full consideration to repercussions.
Thank you, Kathleen. Up next, we have Michael Ops Oxman, followed by Sienna and Ianna. I apologize if I'm saying your names wrong. Michael, great to see you as always.
Hi, friends. I'm Michael Oxman. I'm an arborist. Sounds like an A A. meeting. I'm on the board of the Seattle Greenspaces Coalition and we just sent the council a letter asking for the natural capital assessment, which you created a statement of legislative intent in twenty fifteen to do a tree inventory on steroids that covers not just the plants, but the animals, the creeks, and all of the natural features in the city. When COVID happened, that funding was cut and you never completed it. And it is really essential to ground truthing the canopy cover assessment, which is inadequate. And when I say inadequate, I was at the mayor's tree equity announcement last week. And during the question and answer period, I asked the question, why are we smiling here? We have a proposal to require all, all the trees, except for fifteen percent of them, to be cut down on construction sites. And the state legislature has a proposal to convert all lots into multifamily lots. And when I was done, the mayor ducked that question. He asked for friendly questions as if I was antagonistic. I'm just saying that we need to protect trees and I'm not friendly. So at any rate, Justin Farrell got up there and said, data is not, uh, uh, data is available, but our data sucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Up next is, always great to see you, Michael. Up next is Sienna and Ianna Parret. And is it just one person speaking or? Great. Hello, friend. Yeah, pull it all the way down.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sanaya and I have a business called Podcast Kids that is about protecting the earth and sharing stories and having lots and lots of fun and animals. I am really happy I can attend this meeting and I am so happy to be here to get to the, to get to the root of this tree problem. So will you help me on this devastating mission to save the environment? Please, we will fight and do whatever we have to do to save the trees. Animals are losing their homes by this problem and they also provide oxygen and they are really good for climbing. But I don't feel like the city is doing anything about this. Humans are going to come extinct if we don't stop cutting down trees. So will you help me? Animals, plants, and animals can all become extinct. I feel very sad and hurt right now. Good day.
Thank you. It's very clear you will be sitting on this side of the dais one day soon, probably sooner than you think. Very great. David Glogger and then Steve Rubstelo. Oh, would you like to also speak? Yeah, why don't you come up because you're in order? Sorry, David, I didn't realize. Please.
Thank you, dear members of the city council. I am here today with my daughter Sanaya because as a nurse, as environmental advocate, I have seen firsthand the devastating effects of losing our natural spaces. And I'm deeply concerned about the future of our city if we do not take actions now. I also support the Seattle Urban Forestry Commission and the recommendations to slow down on the tree ordinance. As you know, our city has lost a significant amount of its tree canopy and we cannot afford to lose anymore unnecessarily. Trees are not just aesthetically pleasing. They provide us with a multitude of benefits, including mental and physical health, preserving animal habitats, retaining storm water, pollution reduction, climate change mitigation, erosion, and heat control, wind protection, and then so much more. I'm urging you to take a stand and make the protection of our trees and green spaces a priority. We need to ensure that developers are held accountable for the trees they cut down and we need to invest in programs and initiatives that promote the planting and the preservation of trees. I also ask that you listen to the voices of our children. My daughter is so passionate about saving trees and protecting the environment that she has started Podcast Kids, a community of kids who want to connect with and protect the earth. They are asking us to save their trees and we should listen to them. After all, their future depends on the actions that we take today.
Thank you. David, welcome.
As I've read through the draft tree protection ordinance online, I find it very difficult to understand. But what I do see is that the only protection for the trees is when they're, when the land's not under development. When there's development going on, it seems like there's free rein for developers to cut down the vast majority of trees in the city. So it seems like this is hardly a tree protection ordinance and I think we really need to look at it. And as once mentioned earlier, adopt the, the recommendations of the, on the forestry commission, the urban forestry commission. They finally had a chance to look at it after, well, after the draft was produced. It's time for we listen to the commission, who is supposed to report to the council and their committees to provide information to support our city. But that wasn't listened to until just recently. So I asked this committee to listen to those recommendations and adopt them to protect our trees for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Steve? Great to see you.
Well, I've spoken yet.
I mean, no matter what you say, it's always good to see it.
Well, are we here to save trees or destroy them? And my analysis so far looks like this is more the how do you get rid of the trees in Seattle? You know, big giant loopholes, would you say? I'm saving, but you're not really. There seems to be a feeling in the city that developers have rights, citizens don't. So we can have rules for citizens for reasonable conduct. But when it comes to trees, we don't have the same sort of rules for developers. Now, I know you love Soviet block apartments. But you know, there are people in this city who think we should have more creativity in the look of the city. Every block doesn't have to look exactly the same. You know, I mean, well, different colored paint, but still the same, same thing. And I have never seen a developer that lowered the price of a development because it came in at under cost. They sell at market cost. So this whole idea that you're saving people money by trampling on all the amenities of the city is not quite true. And I think that if you take your advice from developers, it's like taking advice from the Tobacco Institute and the N R A. It just doesn't work. I think citizens need to be protected. There should be a tree ordinance, not a way to get rid of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. My comments still stand. It's great to see you. Up next, we do have all online commenter's presence now. So Eric Armbruster, followed by Keith Hammer, Chris Gall, David Neiman, Steve Zemke, Richard Ellison, Becca Newman, Patrick Taylor, Amanda Galberth, Jessica Dixon, Alicia Ruiz, Sandy Shetler, Suzanne Grant, Nicholas Satell is the list in the order. So Eric Armbruster, followed by Keith Hammer, and then Chris Gall. Eric, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members for hearing us. I am a, my name's Eric Armbruster. I'm a home builder in the city of Seattle and have been doing that for twenty-four years now. As such, I interact frequently with the tree code in a number of different ways. One of those is in the hundreds of trees we've planted on the home sites that we've built on in the last twenty-four years. We struggled over the years with the unpredictability of the current code. And I do believe that the proposed tree code is a good start. It still needs some additional clarification as there is some vague language that can be problematic for predictability for us as to what we can and can't do. But what we're driving towards is predictability. We can, you know, we're, we're charged with building the homes for the people that need to live near their, their places of employment in the city. And to do that, we need to understand what the rules are and they have to be clear so that we can predict them and plan our, our projects as such. I think the, the proposed code goes several steps in that direction. And I'd just like to finish by pointing out that I truly believe that we can provide the homes necessary.
Thank you, Eric. And for the listening and viewing public, please do note when the timer chimes, you have ten seconds left. We hate cutting people off and Eric, please do feel free to send in written comments or attend the public hearing on Monday. Up next is Keith Hammer, followed by Chris Gall and then David Neiman. Keith, welcome.
Hi, my, my name's Keith Hammer. I'm the owner of New Northwest Build, a small builder who's been building in the city of Seattle for the past fifteen years. I build an average of two to three sustainably focused projects each year. Toward this mission, building more homes located in the city where there's existing infrastructure and jobs is a key part of adding housing while being good stewards of the environment. It is important to have a balance of meeting our city's housing needs while maintaining a healthy environment where we live. To this end, a policy that supports both housing and trees can be a good for all parties. The bill is a good start, but needs more clarification. Vague language in the code is problematic for all parties. The bill should ensure predictability that small builders need. As we desperately need more housing, we can't continue to prioritize trees over people. In closing, we need a policy where trees and housing are not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Up next is Chris Gall, followed by David Neiman and then Steve Zemke. Chris, welcome.
Hi, this is.
Yeah.
Chris Gall in Maple Leaf. Hi, I'm calling to advocate to save our existing tree canopy. Research shows that reducing the rate of loss of the existing canopy by fifty, fifty percent results in a larger tree canopy over time. There's no way to make up the forty years of tree growth loss when you cut down a large tree. Let's not be short sighted. I ask that you amend the proposed tree ordinance and remove the eighty-five percent lot coverage guarantee and instead do what Portland does and require that a minimum of twenty percent of each lot be dedicated to tree preservation and tree planting. How come Portland can do this and we can't? Is their housing crisis different from ours? Further, Seattle could follow Portland's lead and require two documents at the start of each development. One, a tree inventory of all trees six inches in diameter and larger. And two, a tree landscaping plan that must go through the approval process. Finally, like Portland, we could create a dedicated tree fund that comes from in lieu fees to be used exclusively for tree planting, watering, and maintenance. Keep Seattle Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Up next is David Neiman, followed by Steve Zemke and then Richard Ellison. David, welcome. And Keith Hammer, I see you're still on the phone, so you can drop off at your, at your convenience. David, welcome.
Thanks, I'm David Neiman. I'm an architect. I specialize in multifamily housing. I did want to start today by thanking Councilmember Strauss for meeting with A I A. Seattle. Our housing task force has proposed some fail-safe provisions to help ensure that these new tree regulations won't prevent land from being developed and it won't prevent new housing from being produced. You've taken our feedback seriously and I hope we can get these changes into the final bill. So thank you. I also want to highlight some of the costs of this bill that really haven't been talked about. I sent to council an article that I wrote that estimated the numbers of projects every year that would trigger arborist, arborist review under this proposal. It's about eight hundred projects. I also estimated the cost associated with this, with this process at an average of about twenty-five thousand dollars per permit. What that works out to is twenty million dollars a year spent on compliance paperwork. That money will not plant a single new tree in South Seattle. It's just twenty million dollars of surveys, reports, diagrams, and corrections letters. Many of the proposed amendments you're looking at will make this progress, this process even more bureaucratic, more costly, and more time consuming. So please give that some thought as you review the amendments today. Thank you.
Thank you, David. David, up next is Steve Zemke, followed by Richard Ellison and then Becca Newman. Steve, welcome.
So my name's Steve Zemke, speaking for friends of Seattle's urban forest and tree pack. I urge the removal of item nine in the substitute bill, section twenty-five, eleven, one, one, five. It alters a clear fee-in lieu structure that applies to everyone to one that gives developers the right to petition the city for exemptions. Be it administrative in view and would have S D C I. now determine what is quote severe economic impact and quote undue burden to developer. Owning property is investment and developers need to choose wisely for their best return. Seattle has a responsibility to protect the public health and welfare of its citizens by addressing climate and pollution impacts, stormwater runoff, other benefits of a healthy urban forest. I'm aware of no other city that has legislation saying that development investment returns trump all other considerations, reject this amendment. Item ten should read two violations for illegal removal of any trees regulated under the ordinance, not just heritage trees and exceptional trees, should result in a suspension for a year as well as fines. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Up next is Richard Ellison, followed by Becca Newman and then Patrick Taylor. Richard, welcome.
Well, thank you. I understand I get two minutes today.
Uh, one minute thirty seconds today, two minutes on Monday.
Oh, you promised me. Ah, I see.
Oh, this is Richard Ellison. My problem, my, my apologies. Yeah, let's give you two minutes and thirty seconds since you got, there were technical issues last time around. Richard, please. Two minutes and thirty seconds today.
Hello, council members. My name is Richard Ellison. I'm a retired planting college student teacher. Between the English ivy and clematis choking out big trees and saplings on private and public properties and the collusion of S D C I. and the Master Builders Association to allow tree clearing on eighty-five percent of a multifamily lot, prior to any design review, this pretty much guarantees the demise of our urban forest. With climate change bringing us one hundred degree summer days and long months of drought, the survivability of newly planted trees goes further down, which is already very low according to Seattle City Arborist. The Seattle Urban Forest Commission was created in two thousand and nine by the city council, originally with the task of updating the tree protection ordinance. But instead, the commission's recommendations have been largely ignored by S D C I., the mayor, and the city council. Sorry, council members, but without incorporating adequate tree retention and planting areas as identified by the Urban Forestry Commission, the C E P A. D N S. is inadequate and it requires a full environmental impact statement. Remember, the Master Builders Association lost its lawsuit against the city's tree ordinance last year. The livability of Seattle for the long term is in your hands now and you can collude against the citizens and in favor of those who only want to profit, who have and will be building almost exclusively luxury and market rate housing and they're not building affordable housing. You have the option to require building around existing trees whenever possible, demanding the maximum retention of existing trees as the rule of law and not just at the whim of a developer. Build taller, not lot line to lot line, and save more trees. This isn't about affordable housing. This is about maximizing profits for the development industry, which has controlled S D C I. for decades now. I know, I was on Councilmember Dan Drago's Urban Forest Task Force twenty-five years ago and it's the same dog and pony show today with S D C I. From Chief Seattle's reported speech, where is the thicket? Gone. Where is the eagle? Gone. The end of living and the beginning of survival. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Up next is Becca Newman, followed by Patrick Taylor and then Amanda Galberth. Becca, welcome.
Hello. Hello. This is Becca Newman. Hi. I'm a professor at University of Washington in the Civil Environmental Department and I'm a member of the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm speaking here as a member of the public and as an individual. I would like to advocate for the recommendations made by the Urban Forestry Commission as they relate to this draft tree ordinance. The commission put a lot of thought into these recommendations and they should be taken seriously. In particular, I think the eighty-five percent hardscape allowance is highly problematic. The approach is untested. The approach is untested and will not end up actually protecting trees. In general, I think it's important that we not pit development and housing needs against trees. The two can and should go hand in hand. We can both alleviate our housing crisis and have a green city with an urban forest that supports human and ecological health. A city without trees is going to be hotter, less healthy, less robust. I really believe the city did not think of these two as opposed to each other, but instead should focus on legislation that prioritizes the retention of trees in conjunction with the development of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Becca. Up next is Patrick Taylor, followed by Amanda Galbraith and then Jessica Dixon. Patrick, welcome.
Patrick Taylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, Patrick. Sorry, we're having a coughing in the chambers. Just before you get started, if you are going to cough, please cover your mouth and if you need to, please wear a mask. Thank you. Take it away, Patrick.
Great. Hi, my name is Patrick Taylor. I'm a housing designer and advocate who's worked on numerous projects permitted in Seattle. We all agree that protecting and growing Seattle's street canopy is important. The proposed legislation as written is not the way to go about it. I've heard a majority of council members say that we're in a housing affordability crisis and that this is worth making it easier to build much needed housing. This bill could do the opposite. It adds dozens of pages of new regulations to our code while making it cost prohibitive for property owners to remove dangerous or sick trees. We'll spend more money on new bureaucracy and enforcement than it will on planting trees, the thing that we all want in the end. I'd urge council members to put housing affordability front and center when discussing this bill and focus more on adding trees and adding process and fees. I ask you all to support Councilmember Strauss's sensible amendments A2 and G4, which will improve the bill by streamlining the process for building housing in Seattle's more intensive urban zones that produce the majority of our new housing. Thank you for your time and for all the council's work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick. Up next is Amanda Galbraith, followed by Jessica Dixon and then Alicia Ruiz. Amanda, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Galbraith and as a landscape designer, living and working in Seattle, I've seen trees being lost at an alarming rate. To grow Seattle's urban canopy, tree planting on both public and private property will be required on a very large scale. And anything that increases the cost of tree stewardship is in direct conflict with the goal of growing the canopy. As someone who sees a cost
Amanda, if you're cutting in and out a little bit here, we paused your time. Are you still there?
Well, I'll just, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, it's cutting in and out. We did pause your time, but
Okay. Okay, well, I will just jump, I can jump back in. Basically, I just want to urge you to slow down the process that you're going through now rather than rushing and take time to speak with the arborist community in Seattle. The proposed ordinance does not address the affordable housing crisis in this city, doesn't address the flawed permitting process, and it certainly encourages a whole lot of dishonest free work. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Up next is Jessica Dixon, followed by Alicia Ruiz, Sandy Shetler, Suzanne Grant and Nicholas Satell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is Jessica Dixon. Hi. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jessica Dixon and I'm a District Two resident. I have a recipe for maximum profit from housing development under the new tree ordinance. First, plan market rate housing and luxury housing in desirable neighborhoods. Two, skip the fuzzy step of conducting a tree inventory upfront since it will be easy to adjust to. Clear cut lot and pay nominal fee into new tree planting fund to plant saplings in existing street right of way where they will be subject to drought, stress and severe over pruning to clear for power lines and traffic. Bottom line, I believe the substitute bill makes it easier to remove existing trees on private property during development and is missing key components, which will lead to the loss over time of our city's remaining mature trees. I urge you to take the time you need to consider and incorporate the USC recommendations. Think about the legacy you want to leave for our children and our environment as we mark Earth Day 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Up next is Alicia Ruiz, followed by Sandy Shetler and then Suzanne Grant.
Good afternoon, Chair Strauss and members of the committee. My name is Alicia Ruiz. I'm with the Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties. And I have remarks to say today, but I would like to take a second to address what I've been hearing today in the meetings in the past. And I really refuse to continue to allow members I refuse to allow other folks that are testifying to speak badly of home builders. I mean, these are wonderful people. They're small business owners, small companies, and it infuriates me that we continue to demonize them. You know, home builders have built every single home that you live in. They're an important part of our community. And so I hope moving forward, we keep speaking, we keep speaking poorly or demonizing a great group of people. It's just, it's just not fair. Anyway, I'll just end to say that this bill's a good start. We need some clarification in language because we need predictability that helps keep excessive time delay and cost down. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Up next is Sandy Shetler, followed by Suzanne Grant, and last is Nicholas Satell. For the viewing public, if you would like to call, register for public comment, you've got about six minutes to do so. So Sandy Shetler, welcome.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Oh, great. Hi, Councilmember Dan. And yeah, thank you so much. This is Sandy Shetler. Good afternoon, council members. I did want to respond to the previous commenter that we just need to set the system up for everybody's success and this is not an either or discussion. So I did want to comment on the economic hardship argument used to justify tree removals on lots proposed for development. And it's also used for granting waivers to remove trees and build into parts of environmentally critical areas. Existing trees and ECAs are very obvious when a property is marketed. Buying properties with that knowledge and immediately applying for economic relief is disingenuous and hollows out valuable community and environmental protection. Please ensure that this bill is consistent and does not unfairly advantage property purchasers who use economic hardship arguments to justify clearing Seattle's valuable urban trees. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandy. Up next is Suzanne Grant, followed by our last speaker, Nicholas Satell. Suzanne.
Hello, this is Suzanne Grant. I am here to talk about this critical moment for Seattle's urban forest, which you all are working with. I'd like to speak about the, to reply to the planner earlier who mentioned that they plant trees on homes. Well, in fact, they do not survive. They, I've seen them in my neighborhood, these trees, there's no one to oversee their success. Another speaker said that we were prioritizing trees over people. This is far as what is happening, but people need trees for a healthier life. There's another speaker just spoke and she said, and I would like to tell her, it's not up to her to allow or disallow our comments. I ask you, do you think master builders is out to make money basically or to save trees? There's a hole in the sky where the tree once was. Somebody's making money. I support the piece in today's Seattle Times by James Davis and Jessica Dixon. It's a fabulous piece. I hope you read it. Under the current draft, lot coverage guarantees are increased so that only two and a half feet of earth is left alongside buildings. Not enough space for mature trees to survive. We really want large, healthy Doug firs replaced by small ornamental trees. And also, large trees can be cut down with minimal fees based on sapling replacement costs. Why is there no valuation of the environmental health and equity benefits that large trees provide? Basically, how many large trees does Seattle actually have? This is a missing piece in current policy effort. I also support the Urban Forestry Commission and I beg for you to listen to their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Up next is Nicholas Satell, and this is our final speaker. Nicholas, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. Hi, my name's Nick. I work with Seattle YMB, a local volunteer based organization that advocates for abundant housing and inclusive sustainable development in Seattle. We'd like to express our concern for the recently proposed tree legislation as we're worried that it will not plant new trees and instead reduce housing affordability and exacerbate the housing crisis. We're worried that this bill will lock Seattleites out of high opportunity neighborhoods and increase displacement. Rich single family zones were designed to exclude renters and people of color from better access to opportunity. They also have higher tree cover and we're worried that preserving the trees there will maintain the segregated status quo. Unfortunately, neighborhoods with the highest displacement risk also have the smallest tree canopy, making them more desirable for development under this legislation. This bill should focus more on legalizing taller, thinner buildings with more green space. We share your view that trees play an important role in Seattle's urban fabric and we understand how important they are for our climate goals. However, Seattle's also in the midst of a climate and housing emergency. Each unit of infill housing, delayed or denied, increases home prices, raises carbon emissions, increases sprawl and gets us further from housing all our neighbors and meeting our climate goals. It's not the responsibility of Seattle's renters and hopeful homeowners to bear the brunt of these unfunded regulations through higher rent and higher home prices. And it's certainly not the responsibility of Seattle's marginalized neighborhoods to disproportionately bear the brunt of development. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. And I see Leah Hall has signed up for public comment, but you are listed as not present, so I'm going to kind of stall for just a second because you have about one minute to call in on the number that was provided in the RSVP list. It is not the council listen line, so we're going to just slow walk, closing out public comment to see if we can give you the opportunity to join us now. I'm sorry, your time has exceeded my friend. So we are going to, Mr. G, could you give me a sense of how much longer it might take for her to join us?
I do not have a sense of how much longer it would take.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. G. We will, if Leah, if you are not able to join us right now, we'll give you a little extra time on Monday. Councilmember Nelson, any thoughts for the moment?
No.
No? Okay, well. Looks like I have stalled as long as I can. And seeing as we have no additional speakers remotely present, we will move on to the next agenda item. Leah, please do feel free to send in your comments to to us. And just kind of reacting to the public comment that I heard today, just noting that we are having the schedule slip. We are taking more time and we're adding more time to the calendar. Originally, next Wednesday was going to be the final vote out of committee and we heard loud and clear from the Urban Forestry Commission that they wanted more time. And so we're, we're engaging with that despite the land use calendar being overly full this quarter. So directly after the tree bill, we will be taking up the first time that we will be rezoning industrial lands in about 16 years. And so two big policies back to back, this has been going on. I heard one person say 25 years. Heard 13 years. For me, I've been working on this for five years, so that is a part of the urgency here. Urban Forestry Commission, I have worked, as this bill has become, come before my committee, I've worked at every step to engage the Urban Forestry Commission so that their voice is heard. And just as some events have unfolded this week, now it is more important now than ever that civility is part of our conversation here. I have zero patience for people showing up at elected folks' homes. I have zero patience for demeaning and questioning the motives of of public servants who are just trying to do their best to represent many different constituencies, residents and viewpoints in our system. So I I channels Sandy Shetler in saying that we can be good in the way that we speak to each other and we don't, this is not an either or situation. We are able to create outcomes that benefit everyone. With that, our only item on the day, on today's agenda is a briefing discussion and possible and vote on, possible vote on amendments on Council Bill 120534, the Tree Protections Bill. Just to clarify, we will just be voting on the substitute. We will not be voting on any amendments today. Was that correct?
The substitute is technically an amendment.
Very well said, clerk. Clerk, will you please read the short title into the record?
Item one, Council Bill 120534, Tree Protections Bill for Briefing Discussion and Possible Amendments.
Thank you. We are joined by Yolanda Ho and Kedel Freeman from Council Central Staff today to present. Thank you to Council Central Staff for your fast work on the table of amendments ready for today. We're also joined by Kristy Carr and Deborah McGary from SDCI and Mike Podowski, if you want to join us, you're more than welcome to. As they work directly with the tree code and assistant answering questions. As always, I've also invited Andrea Starbird from the Seattle Arborists Association and Joshua Morris from the co-chair of the Urban Forestry Commission to the table today. Unfortunately, Josh is otherwise obligated today. These invitations will remain. Yolanda Ho, Kedel Freeman, if you could take it away and let's get into the substitute bill. For the viewing public, I had quite a lot of concerns about one, one section of the substitute. And I'd like to hear exactly why, on the, on the record, as to why we need to include it despite my desires.
Kedel Freeman, Council Central Staff.
Yolanda Ho, Council Central Staff.
Yeah. So I'll orient you all to the materials that are attached to the agenda. There's a new memo from Yolanda dated April 20th and that was distributed to the committee yesterday afternoon. There are two important attachments to that memo. One is the proposed substitute bill. And then another is a list of about 50 potential amendments that may be offered by committee members at upcoming meetings beginning on April 26. So I'll walk through the substitute here and answer any questions that you have. As you mentioned, Councilmember Strauss, if folks want to request that things be removed from substitute, that should happen before there's a vote on it, if there is a vote on it today. And then Yolanda will walk through the potential amendments. I'm going to share my screen here for everybody, the memo. Is everybody seeing that?
Yes, yes, I am.
Memo from yesterday, there's a table on the second and first and second page of the memo that sort of describes what is in the substitute bill. The substitute bill largely contains sort of technical and clarifying changes. There is one section, a new section that was recommended by the Law Department to provide some due process protections. Law has requested that actually this one be pulled for the time being from the substitute for further refinement to make sure that it's consistent with the current state of Washington's law for takings and substantive due process. So that may be one that the committee would like to remove from the substitute if action happens on the substitute today. So I'll go ahead and walk through the 13 or so amendments that are in the substitutes and answer any questions that you all may have about them. First Amendment in the substitute and that will sort of tells you where things are, what section it's in and also gives you a guide to where the page is and what, where the line numbers are for the proposed amendment. This one will clarify that hazardous tree abatement is not exempt from the regulations of the tree protection ordinance. So if you are abating a tree, you have to mitigate for that abatement. But also clarify how the ordinance works in conjunction with the master plan community, Estor Terrace Zone. That is a very specific zone that applies to the Estor Terrace development. It was approved through a planned action ordinance. It has its own set of tree protection, preservation and planting requirements. So this would clarify that the tree ordinance does not apply to Estor Terrace, except that, except to the extent that work in Estor Terrace has to be done by folks who are registered. work in Estor Terrace has to be done by folks who are registered with the city's tree service provider registry. It would clarify that these exempt trees that are removed because of an insect infestation are also subject to the replacement requirements. So the mitigation requirements of the ordinance does apply in that section as well. Four and five are actually kind of related and in sort of looking here at what I wrote, I would say that it is probably less than clear, sort of poorly worded. But and what these amendments do is what they would clarify that limitations on the removal of trees on developed lots outside of development and apply in all zones. So outside of development, if it is a developed lot, there are limitations on tree removals and toppings that have, that occurs in all zones. But that that limitation includes an allowance for some removals in neighborhood residential, low-rise, commercial and Seattle mix zones of tier three and tier four trees on developed lots within specified time periods. That's a clarification, but I may have made it more confusing by how I described it in the description here of the substitute. The section that is retitled kind of a long, long title originally, instead it would just be called Requirements for Trees When Development Is Proposed. Number seven is a clarification that site plan requirements include identification of all tier four trees, not just tiers one, two and three trees. Section eight would clarify that for the purposes of calculating development capacity, portions of a lot that are in certain critical areas do not count towards that calculation unless an applicant has gotten a decision from the SDCI director about critical areas ordinance modifications, their variety of critical areas ordinance modifications that are available. Section nine, this is the section I mentioned that's recommended by the city attorney's office. Would add some procedural due process protections to the bill. Section 10, we'll clarify that tree service providers could only be removed from the registry after being issued NOVs for removal of tier one or tier two trees, not other types of violations that might have to do with things like notice. This is a somewhat substantive amendment, number 11, it would authorize a 50% increase in civil penalties for certain types of NOVs or certain characteristics of NOVs. Number 12 would clarify that this is, this really, this number 12 is making, just making sure that the base code is consistent with laws that have already passed, clarifies the reportable work for registered tree service providers. It does not include removal of things like dead branches and roots. That should have been in the base code. But the draft that was sent to us didn't reflect changes that were made in February. And then finally, there are some changes, there are some corrections to punctuation errors and other minor changes to phrasing and replacing things like DBH with the SH. There is one and DBH in the bill and those changes are made throughout. So that is the proposed substitute bill.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Just to kind of go through this, I'm going to focus first on number nine, which I'm glad to hear we are pulling out today. Can you, Kedal, can you share with me why we need language regarding due process?
There are a couple of scenarios and both are set out of the section. And again, we need to refine this a little bit with the Law Department. One contemplates sort of when there is some sort of mitigation requirement. It's hard to know when this scenario may come up, but when there is a mitigation requirement that exceeds, or the city imposes a mitigation requirement that exceeds and what might actually be needed to mitigate a tree loss. And so there's an opportunity, there's a process there whereby somebody could say this actually exceeds the mitigation, the sort of what we use for nexus and proportionality here as a guide that arborists use. But if somebody finds themselves in a circumstance where they believe that the mitigation required by the city exceeds what's necessary to mitigate their tree cutting, they would have a way to get some relief or at least make that case to the SDCI director. The other sort of is really about tier one trees, so about heritage trees. So there may be folks out there who have a designated heritage tree on their site. Sort of, you know, nominated their tree, love the tree on their site, may not know that this legislation is going through and that because of their nomination, their heritage tree is now going to receive a high level of protection on those tree ordinance. They may be able to develop their site using the different modifications and mitigation that is in the current ordinance, but they may not be. And if in that case, they could find that there's a severe economic impact and they could make that case to the city. So it is to sort of deal with those situations where somebody may bring a takings claim against the city.
Thank you, Kedal. Excuse me here. Does this due process procedure apply to someone who has purchased a lot after this legislation has gone into effect? Or is it simply for people that are currently owning the lot and having the law changed on them while they are, while they retain ownership?
So they're right. This is all, I think, going to change. So depending on further conversations with the Law Department. But there is a list of factors that the SDCI director could consider in determining whether or not there is a severe economic hardship. And one of those factors could be when, when ownership, when, when, you know, when a property, who the current owner is, when the property changed hands and what that owner knew or did not know, when the property changed hands and whether or not they could have known. When the property changed hands, that there was a heritage tree or tier one tree on the property. So those are factors that the SDCI could, director could consider, but they're not necessarily just positive factors. It's kind of a balanced test that the SDCI director would need to go through. And then an applicant would need to sort of, they would have the burden of proof of demonstrating that there is a severe economic hardship.
Thank you, Kedal. Just for the record, to reflect my opinions on this, is that we do need to create a process for, of due process for people who own heritage trees today and the law is changing on them today. I do not want to see a loophole created through this, through this language. And so I will be removing this from the substitute today. And we'll review with you, Kedal and others, what the final language will be. Because I do understand we have to have some sort of due process procedure. But it needs to be narrowly tailored, so it is not used against the intent of the bill. I'm going to kind of run through some of these amendments. Councilmember Nelson, I know this is, you're coming up to speed a little bit faster than maybe you desired and maybe we needed to outreach to you sooner to get the briefing in front of you. These amendments are ideas that I've put forward that seem to be non-controversial in nature. And the real goal of a lot of this is to close some of the loopholes that were either, that were included in the bill. So clarifying that hazardous tree abatement is not exempt. We don't want to have a tree that is deemed hazardous just to have it removed. Clarifying that infestation is something that, just because your tree is infested, does not mean that you get to skip the replacement requirements. Making sure that the environmentally sensitive areas, biodiverse areas, riparian corridors are not part of the hardscape coverage. And increasing the penalties for violations. That's something I'm very excited about. And I know that there's some questions about item 10, about the tree service providers, and we can kind of get into that. But with that overview, colleagues, are there questions?
Well, I just wanted to respond about you bringing me up to speed. I did, you know.
There was no, there was no attack. I wasn't trying to diminish.
Okay, because I just want to make it, make it very clear that I come to meetings, I pay, I'm taking this very, very, very seriously. And, you know, I always like to talk to people, stakeholders. And so seven adds tier four trees, which is kind of a lot of trees to add for documentation. I'm not voicing an opinion. Nine adds a section. One, law now wants amendment one out. I think, I guess that was what it was, if I didn't, if I understood that correctly. So I'm just sort of, you know, creating space for me to say, these seem like amendments and I'm just going to sit it out. Thanks.
No problem. Absolutely. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Thank you Chair Strauss. And thank you for walking us through these components of the substitute bill. Before I make, just ask a couple of questions or make comments about item 10. Will we be, after the substitute bill, after we address that fully, will, will we have time later today to go through some of the 48 amendments that are starting on page 55 of Central Staff's memo attached to the agenda?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, so after we do the substitute, will Central Staff is prepared to walk at a high level, not in a detailed fashion? Because many, I don't know that any of these have actually been written. But this is an exercise in informing the public of the direction that we are going so that you are informed as easily, as quickly as possible. So yes, once we get through the substitute, we'll take a high-level overview of the amendments that have been proposed. And again, any amendment within the substitute can be pulled out.
Thank you. Great. So I do want to thank Central Staff. I know they've been working heroically the last few weeks here. So thank you, Yolanda and Kedal and others. I want to thank Toby Thaler and my staff for also working thoroughly on this stuff. I want to request that we, for the substitute, remove item 10. That deals with a tree service provider law that we had recently adopted and revised. So I'd just like to pull that item out.
Great. Would you like, and maybe I can provide a little bit of context, and I know Andrea Starbird is here. This was, there's desire, I'll let Andrea speak for herself, but what I can tell you is that there was not the opportunity to make any amendments when the tree service provider cleanup bill came back to us because it did not have the correct section in the title. This is that opportunity. And Andrea, maybe if you could explain the problem that we are trying to solve. I'm really candidly very open to however we want to solve it, but I do think that your worries are legitimate.
Thank you, and I appreciate you having me here. I'm happy to talk about this. This is, so overall, from the Seattle Arborists Association, we agree with the TSP, agree with the intent of the TSP. But unfortunately, as it has kind of come into practice, it leaves the potential for clerical errors or errors of not understanding the new code when SDCI unfortunately hasn't had maybe the funding to create a really aggressive public campaign, like sharing the information of the new ordinance. Also, homeowners don't have information about the new ordinance. So the tier one and tier two trees, because they're heritage and exceptional trees, have been protected for years. And any TSP, and most homeowners know that those trees are already protected and have been. So that feels like a reasonable, immediately actionable removal reason for the TSP. Whereas a notice requirement, kind of like missing that notice or accidentally posting something at the wrong address because somebody typed it wrong or has dyslexia or Google Maps sent them to the wrong place. And then immediate compliance required for more limited tree removals in the smaller tiers without a really aggressive public information campaign. We're just really worried that a lot of folks who really are trying to follow good practice and all of the regulations are going to be caught up in being removed from the city for a year. And it's just a really harsh consequence. That's not necessarily commensurate with the amount of harm done. Whereas a tier one and tier two tree, that is a lot of harm and that we think is reasonable to be removed from the TSP in that case.
And maybe I'll summarize what I've heard previously is that good actor TSPs, good actor tree service providers are worried that they will be kicked off of the TSP list, which is their livelihood, for erroneous errors. Is that a good understanding, Andrea?
Hundred percent. Spot on. We're, I mean, it could mean bankruptcy for most of the TSP providers doing work in Seattle. And I would really like to maintain my ability to be employed. I also want other arborists who are starting out in this industry and who are still learning to have the opportunity to work in the city and to become good arborists. And I think this creates such an intensely punitive relationship with our, our exist, or our ability to work in the city that we think it's really going to reduce the amount of arborists who are actually choosing to join the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, please take it away.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I guess, you know, when we're voting on stuff, I'm not sure it's helpful to, it's not helpful for me to have a back and forth with the stakeholders.
Sure.
Appreciate the input. I just, I just think that, you know, you had said we could remove items if we really want to debate this item deeply. I'm willing to do that, but, or we could just for efficiency sake, pull out item 10. I really don't want to relitigate the tree service provider law a third time.
No problem, Councilmember Peterson. I, maybe this was a misinterpretation as I was speaking to you. We will be removing this from the substitute today. No question there. I will be bringing forward an amendment at some point. And so I offered to have Andrea speak so that you know the intent in which I'm coming to from this, so that possibly you could help me craft a solution here.
Thank you Chair. I'm just worried that it captures tier three, it's basically not having a violation for tier three or four trees. I don't, to me, that weakens the bill that we work so hard on.
Yeah, let's work offline to try to craft a solution here. I think for the purpose of today, we'll just continue moving on. I want to work in partnership with you on this one as I think that there is a way to address your concerns and the folks doing this work's concerns. Any other questions on this tree, on the substitute? I'm not seeing any. Councilmember Peterson, seeing as Councilmember Nelson has decided that she won't be voting. I guess I'm just doing a little bit of checking in real time. Are you comfortable with the substitute today?
Thanks for asking Chair. I, you know, because we're such, you know, we've been steeped in this for so long, even before the current committee formations. I was just really fortunate to be able to have my staff look at it in real time. So I, with the removal of items nine and 10, I would be comfortable. Although I do, I do understand where Councilperson Nelson's coming from as well. I also understand where you're trying to come from in terms of like trying to move this forward. So as long as we have enough time to talk about all the amendments and then circle back to some of the meat on the substitute, yeah, I'm willing to replace the current one with this one.
That's great. And let the record reflect, the committee believes Councilmember Nelson is in good standing.
Thank you.
Yep. So with that, I will move to amend the substitute. Actually, I am not seeing the correct language here, Chair. Before I move, what is this? So I am, I would like to remove amendments nine and 10 from the substitute bill before me. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the removal of amendments nine and 10 from the substitute bill?
Councilmember Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Two in favor?
Thank you. The motion carries. Two in favor, one abstention. Amendments nine and 10 have been removed from the substitute bill. And at this time, I would like to move the substitute bill to Council Bill 120534. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to adopt the substitute bill to Council Bill 120534. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Strauss?
Yes.
Two in favor?
Thank you. The motion carries. Two in favor and one abstention. The substitute bill has been adopted to Council Bill 120534. With that, we will move on to the next. Uh, with that, we will move on to the next part of the presentation today. Uh, Yolanda Ho and Kittle Freeman, if you, uh, are able to walk us through. The table of amendments and I'll give my caveat again at, that I shared at the beginning of this meeting. Um, some of these amendments that I've brought forward were ideas that will not be moved forward. And I realized I did not check the correct box on my tablet, uh. Saying that I have some questions about things, but they should have been included. So. We'll be updating this list shortly, and I appreciate everyone's patience and flexibility with me at this time. Yolanda, Kittle, take it away.
Okay, so, um, as has already been mentioned, the tables that are before all of us now. Paint roughly fifty amendments. They are grouped into nine different categories. My intention here is to provide a general overview of the amendments and highlight those that have been of particular interest to the public and. Make one correction as we go through this. So. Um, intent here is not to dig too deep, because as, um, the chair mentioned, these have not actually. Crafted at this point, so they are just high level concept in some cases. All right, so on to group A. These are, uh. Development capacity and development standard modifications. These amendments are related to issues regarding. The proposed change to an eighty-five percent lock coverage standard and multi-family and commercial zones. Allowed modifications to development standards to, for tree preservation. And allowing tree removal and replacement for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit or detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, we have one, so. Just kind of as a broad statement about these amendments, we have some amendments that are mutually exclusive. So for instance, there is one amendment that would. Increase the loud lock coverage, uh, in commercial zones, while another may limit development capacity in the same zone. So. Um, it's obviously passed. So once we get to kind of passing amendments and voting on amendments, we will be highlighting. Those, um, that cannot go together. Um, moving on to group B. This is the urban forestry program and budget. These amendments are about kind of the administration of the regulations and future actions that council members have expressed an interest in pursuing. And we'll highlight here the request from the Urban Forestry Commission. Expand the reporting section that is in the proposed legislation. That would provide, to provide a more comprehensive assessment about the impacts of the legislation. And related efforts to increase our tree canopy, including clarifying the role of the new city urban forester position that is in the office sustainability environment. Tracking tree removals using, uh, data, uh, al- already available data on public and private property. Um, I would just notice that there, I would note that there has been a lot of interest in establishing a new fund to receive the in lieu fee revenues and other sources of funding. To support urban forest management. Unfortunately, that, um, cannot be just added to either of the bills before the committee. Um, this requires separate legislation and, um, so. Right now, the proposal would be that this would appear in a non-codified section to request that the city budget office transmit legislating legislation. Creating the new fund as part of the mayor's twenty twenty-four. Those budgets so that the council can take that up in the fall. Um, and other future actions include requesting that the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections do outreach. About changes to the tree regulations, particularly, uh, the new tree removal restrictions outside of development for residents. Uh, requesting that the executive develop strategies to address tree loss and improve maintenance of trees located on city-owned property. And a commitment to add additional funding to S D C I for code enforcement staff and to expand the trees for neighborhoods program, which provides. Free street and yard trees to residents. To group C. This is the permit review process. This group contains amendments that would change how S D C I reviews development permits. And would add new requirements to either applicants or S D C I intended to create, and these were intended to increase tree retention and the health of. Retained trees during development. I would highlight here amendment C one, council has received lots of requests for the, from the public to require a tree landscaping plan. Uh, before this, before site planning, similar to Portland's practice. Uh, just want to note that S D C I already has most, if not all of the same requirements for site plans as Portland. However, true review kind of may happen later in the process, which can. Cause issues both for the applicants and also trees. Um, so this amendment would request that C C I modify its practices. To consider trees at the beginning of the review process, so as to avoid issues later in the process and also. Perhaps, uh, create additional materials to help, um, guide permit applicants through. The process in a more, uh, clearer manner. I see a hand.
Well, should I, I'll wait until the end to ask questions. Okay.
Whatever you want.
All right. Um, well, so we've got somebody from S D C I here, Mike, and, um. What it. It, it comes down to timing at a, it, it, within the permit process. So can you just tell me if, if Portland is doing this and we're not, uh, but. Basically, the end result is the same that these are, uh, taken account for. So can you just? Add some nuance in here on this one? Help me understand this one better. What would be the substantive change to this in real life? In the, in terms of the whole process?
Hang tight. We, yeah, we, uh, we need the mics for media table. Thank you, Mike. Great to see you as always. Uh, is the little blue light lit?
Coming through now?
Yeah. Loud and clear.
Thank you.
Take it away.
We have some of the, um, the permit review staff on the line, and they could better answer the details about that question, but. We work together with Central Staff to craft some language that could be inserted into the bill. Um, to, um, direct us to take a look at our practices, our procedures and our requirements around administering the, uh, new tree code. So that it, that could be as clear and predictable as possible and, and so that we could make sure that the, uh. considerations about, uh, tree regulations are, um. Considered as early in the process as possible. I'm not personally familiar with, with what they're doing in Portland. We often do look towards them and we have often in our. Work on this, uh, bill. Um, but, um, if, if they're doing something better. With regard to, to tree considerations, um, we'll take a look at it. I think we could learn from that. They could learn from us too sometimes.
Okay. Pretty much a non-issue then. Well, we won't label it, but anyway, thank you very much. Okay.
Uh, okay. Um, also just one more thing to highlight in this, uh, category is there is also a proposed amendment that would create a new term, which. Uh, is the major development project. It's on size and of the project and existing trees on site. And require that these types of projects have additional requirements. Um, moving on to free removal outside of development, group D. This group of amendments would specify other justifications for tree removal outside of development. These reasons may include conflicts with infrastructure and building foundations or needed. Fining to promote the health of inning trees. Some might consider exemptions for the trees or how we treat the trees. Um, and invasive or nuisance species, uh, from tree removal limits. So. Exempting those from the limits. Um, all right, so group E.
I have a question.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks. Um, what is the rationale for D five, please? Could you say that slower? Or talk about that a little bit. It's the exempt dead trees from full hazard tree removal.
Yeah, happy to answer.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, unless Yolanda, I mean, it was my.
Oh, no, please, please go ahead.
Great. Yolanda is still coming up to speed with all of our intent on all of this. It's just that if a tree is dead. To go through the hazardous tree permit adds cost to something that we know is already a hazard. So hazard tree permit and Mike or any of S D C I arborists, tell me if, if I got this right. Hazard tree removal process is for a tree that is still living. That has substantial issues with it. Um, from the way I, I, my worldview, if the tree is already dead. Then there's no chance that it could ever come back. And, and then we're just adding time and costs to a potentially dangerous situation.
I'm all about cutting, uh, you know, eliminating additional unnecessary costs. I was just thinking that, um. Dead trees are habitat and so, uh, and. I just didn't know, um. Anyway, uh, to me, I'll have to think about that one, and that's why it's on this list, et cetera, because. If it's not going to fall over and hurt somebody imminently, then what about all those birds and beneficial? Uh, insects, whatever, living there, but I will, um.
Hundred, I am right.
Talk more about this.
Yeah, I'm right there with you. A snag being in Discovery Park or Seward Park.
Yeah, exactly. The signs say these are an important part of our natural, yeah.
That's exactly right. Or if, you know, if, if the tree, if the tree's not a large dead tree, then yeah, absolutely. Um. I guess my risk is, uh, or my thought here is if there's a dead tree next to a home.
Yep.
Uh, we don't need to add cost and time. Yeah, that's.
Got it.
Pretty complicated. That's a joke. Sorry, not at you. Just make, trying to make light of the tense situation. Yolanda, feel free to take it on, take it along.
Okay, so on to group. The, uh, in lieu fees and trade replacement requirements, uh. There are nine amendments here related to the proposed fee in lieu of planting replacement trees and just kind of replacement tree requirements generally. Would note here, there is an error with E six that was proposed by Councilmember Peterson. So. That proposal should read that the fee would be four thousand dollars or seventeen eighty-seven per square inch, whichever is higher. And that, um, that we would have a tier one and tier two trees that are below twenty-four inches. Diet D S H should be assessed at twenty-four inches D S H for the purposes of determining that fee. So. Obviously, we'll correct that one the, and officially before the committee, I just wanted to note was not correct. Um, other proposals would increase the replacement requirements specify where off-site replacement. Trees may be planted and authorize S D C I to promulgate rules to ensure that replacement trees are planted. In such a way to ensure their long-term health. Other placement species be native and are culturally significant and resilient to the impacts of climate change. Also, uh, highlight here E nine, which has been another item of interest to the public. This amendment will require that a active notices of violation for illegal tree removal. Associated with a property be resolved for S D C I will accept an application for development of that property. There's been an ongoing issue of sellers kind of scraping their lots prior to a developer agreeing to buy their property. So as to avoid tree regulations, and so this is intended to address that issue. Uh, moving on to group F, tree service providers. We have a couple of amendments here. Yeah, there they are, sorry. Um. There, uh, these are specific to the tree service provider requirements. One would amend the definition of reportable. Exclude pruning of fruit trees that are cultivated for fruit production. Um, and the other would establish potentially additional penalties for unregistered tree service providers that are illegally. Conducting commercial tree work in Seattle. Uh, moving on to group G, tree, oh, yes.
Yes, of course you, I see business license. Um, so I. I need to refresh myself on the existing penalties for, um, uh, unregistered tree service providers. Uh, providing commercial work. What I want to know is, are there a lot of trees and you have, um, you've worked with a lot of. The actual arborists and tree service providers. So do they do things under one business license that if they're wrongly? Um, and, uh. Working on trees when they shouldn't be, if you take that license away, uh. Under that business license, if they're doing landscape architecture or something like that design. Will this, uh, will that idea, um, impact their ability to do the rest of their business?
Great question.
By taking away that business license.
I'm going to pass that to Andrea if you're still available to answer that question. She is our resident arborist. Um. It's my understanding that, uh, I know, for instance, like with some restaurants. A restaurant group will have many different restaurants with different E I Ns. Um, it's my understanding that the way that arborist organizations work is it's just one for the whole thing, but.
Okay.
That's my best assumption. Andrea, take it away.
I can't speak for every T S P, but my assumption is similar to Councilmember Strauss's that I, I believe that most of us are operating under. One E I N. Um, there are several T S Ps who have consulting only wings. Um. Which could be operating under separate E I Ns, but my. Understanding of how the T S P list works right now is that. Each of those businesses would have to be registered as its individual T S P provider.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions.
All right. We will move on to group E. Tree protections during development. These amendments are related to trees during development. One would change the exception for planting new street trees for the expansion of a structure. By one thousand square, the, oh, sorry, the except. The exception for planting new street trees for the expansion of a structure by one thousand square feet or less. To five hundred square feet or less, meaning that this would require any expansion, five hundred square feet. Or larger would trigger the street tree requirement in commercial zones. Those are in regard to tree protection areas and how to factor in trees on abutting properties. Uh, group H is kind of our other substantive amendments category. This is a small group, contains amendments that are related to the substance or intent of the bill, but didn't quite fit into any of the previous categories. Uh, these include requiring the removal invasive species during development and prohibiting planting of invasive species by new development. Mending the purpose and intent section as proposed by the Urban Forestry Commission. And adding a new section of findings to support tree regulations. And then, uh, let's see, we have group I. These last few amendments are purely technical in nature. The first would amend the definition of tree grove to clarify that each individual tree. Within the grove is regulated as a tier two tree, which would be consistent with our current regulations. As individual trees within a grove are considered, or each considered an exceptional tree. The second would, uh, use the term qualified tree professional instead of certified arborist. Or tree service provider in the code. And the last one would be to make sure that the definitions and hazard tree risk assessment language are consistent throughout the code. And with that very quick overview, I. Questions?
Uh, sorry, yes, if you could keep that up on the screen. Excuse me here, um. Uh, one of my amendments here is to amend the whole bill to use one term such as qualified tree professional. Yolanda, you gave me some pretty good feedback about why this might not be a good idea. Could you or Mike share with me, um. The nuances of this and, and Andrea, you might want to be ready to weigh in as well.
Yeah, um, and I might call on Christie as well. She, I've kind of talked with her about this. I think. Um, the point is, is that there are certain requirements for certified arborists, but they don't necessarily have to be registered tree service providers. And so I think. That we didn't, you know, having one term didn't necessarily work because. There are specific requirements for registered tree service providers, but there could be, you know, consulting arborist who is not necessarily a registered tree service provider. So. Uh, who's reviewing plans or providing, um, tree protection reports and things like that that are. Required in the code, um, but would not require a registered tree service provider per se, because those are. It doesn't kind of fit under the definition of a commercial tree work, which is kind of that crux of. Uh, the registered tree service provider provisions, right? So we have a category of commercial tree work. And that does not include tree protection reports. And so therefore. Um, that those tree service provider provisions don't necessarily, uh, relate to having a certified arborist who would do that.
Wonderful. And, um, sorry, who, who from S D C, was it?
Yeah, I, Christie and I kind of looked at this together.
Yeah, Christie, any feedback that you'd like to share with us?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I would just echo what Yolanda said, um, and also, uh, there are certain things for. For example, a tree service provider, when they're registered, uh, they only have to have and a single, um. Uh, certified arborist or one on retainer, one on staff or one on retainer, but there are specific things or actions in the code that. We want to be completed by a certain certified or qualified people, a certified arborist or a track. Arborists, uh, and so we want to be able to maintain, uh, that ability to specify the type of professional. Uh, that does that work versus a generic, if you will, tree service provider. So it's, 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 I think that the way the code is structured, it is somewhat cumbersome with some separate terms, but I do think that it is intentional.
Thank you, Christie. Um, Andrea, just real quick, does all of that also align with your perspective as a professional in this department?
I think that that definitely makes sense. There was one section in the code, uh, or in the draft ordinance that is. That kind of.
that kind of threw me off, at least when I was reading it, and it said somewhere that a registered tr- if a registered tree service provider assesses a tree as a high risk. So in that moment, it didn't require that it was a tree risk assessment qualified or certified arborist. So that was kind of an area that it seemed like maybe where we're using tree service, where tree service provider is used. If the intent is that that person is a certified arborist when assessing risk, maybe that could be defined under qualified true professional. You know, somebody doing tree risk assessments needs to be qualified through XYZ qualifications. Um, but I think as long as that language is clear, that it's a tree risk assessment qualified arborist and not a registered tree service provider. I think that would resolve kind of the concerns that we have about that.
Gotcha. Appreciate that. Um, so we'll work on that one. Uh, colleagues, are there any other questions on this universe of amendments? Rem- um, remembering that we're not going to get too deep into this, but yeah, this is an opportunity to ask about intent. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Chair Strauss. Again, I want to thank central staff for their hard work, uh, putting together all these amendments. I guess there were thirteen in the substitute bill and then another forty-eight or so here, so it's a total of sixty-one, I think. So uh, that's a lot to put together. I know even more work ahead in terms of crafting these into the legalese to get um these amendments uh officially before us. Um, but but Chair, is this a time to speak just globally to the amendments?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um. So my goal, I know the Urban Forestry Commission worked really hard uh trying to review the the draft bill and they sent to us an April seventh letter. And they had noted in the letter that they were disappointed with the um, the part of the executive's process of developing the council bill. And so we're now trying to incorporate. I'd like to incorporate as much of the Urban Forestry Commission input as possible. Uh, so that's the intent of, that's the global intent of my amendments is try to, trying to incorporate uh what the Urban Forestry Commission was was trying to um recommend in their letter that they sent. Uh, it's a fifteen-page letter they sent on April seventh. Um, my goal really is to make this a free protection bill, not a profits protection bill, and and I do believe we can have the um affordable housing and protect our trees at the same time. And so um, that's what I'm working toward here. So I appreciate um uh collaborating with central staff to to work through these amendments. Thank you for noting that Amendment E six should be uh what the Urban Forestry Commission had in their letter, which was a minimum of four thousand dollars for the in lieu fee. Um, in terms of their city urban forester position, I think that's sort of piled into uh Amendment B four. And um, I may want to look at how we can empower that city urban forester position that we, that this council created. Um, here, I'm I'm a little bit worried this amendment, there's a lot going on with B four. Uh, but want to make sure that the Office of Sustainability Environment and the city urban forester position really have um some substantial um authority to um help us as we're trying to implement this new law, um and not putting all the burden on um Seattle Department of Construction and Inspection. And then uh, I do feel that the um provision that was put in there to the eighty-five percent uh developer guarantee for lots is problematic. I think that um the decision should be made based on all the other criteria we have in the in the ordinance rather than having some um specific uh protection for what the, what the real estate developer can do. I know that they're seeking certainty. I appreciate that. Um, I think we'll have certainty once we pass this bill. Um, and then the replacement trees, uh, one of the key amendments I want to highlight there is my hope to have an inch for inch replacement. I think it's E four. Um, so when a, when a twenty-four inch tree is is removed uh to benefit the 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 landowner developer, it's to actually, actually in in light of when a development is happening, when a twenty-four inch tree, for example, is removed, that replacement trees should be um uh similar um diameter or so. Um, you know, four, six-inch trees would then replace that, for example. So that's the intent behind that. And um, I think that summarizes a, a few of the key ones from me. Thank you.
Really well said, Councilmember Peterson. Um, I don't know if there's further committee action here, uh, because we have reviewed all of the material that was set up for today. Uh, Councilmember Nelson, take it away.
Well, I'll speak to the universe of my one amendment. Uh, and that is, and then I have a question about another one. Um, so B six is a request that the executive proposed strategies including cost estimates to improve maintenance to prevent tree loss and increase tree canopy coverage on city-owned property in response to the findings of the twenty twenty-one tree canopy assessment. The meaning of this is that I was struck on the first day when we started uh looking at maps and the bar charts of where the trees are and where the losses are happening. Um, I'm concerned about the trees on our property in primarily on parks and open space, but also on on in the right of way. Um, we have to get our house in order to protect our very own trees. And so uh, I don't know what that means. I'm not suggesting, when I talked to central staff, they said we can't make all of these uh regulations apply to all the trees on our property because, anyway. So I understand that that's unwieldy. I feel that we need to understand or I need to understand what, what's happening to the trees on our property. Is it um, is it infestations? Is it uh wanton cutting down? Just kidding, parks, I know that you wouldn't do that, but what's going on why, why we're losing trees on our property and um and then take responsibility? So I don't know if that's a future budget action to um, to do more tree maintenance or whatever, but that is what I'm trying to get at. And um, I do think that we need to keep it in mind that we're a big partner in our, the preservation of our tree canopy. And um, so in in back to, in the the statement that I wanted to make was that I am all in on the remove invasives during development because Ivy is a big problem. And you know, I say that all the time, but um got my full support there. And then Councilmember Peterson, I had one question on um. Uh, let's see, the life of the project E eight, because so that says require replacement of failed replacement trees for the life of the project. Um, so if somebody replants a tree and then uh it dies, then it has to be replaced. What happens if that property has changed ownership? And also I am assuming you're considering that there are uh, there are factors outside of one's control. It's not only negligence why some of these trees are are going away. I mean, in neighborhood commercial zones, we, we know that there is um, you know, there's sometimes vandalism and things happen to trees that aren't the adjacent property owner's fault. So what are you trying to get at there? Can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Um, yeah, regarding uh amendment E eight, require replacement of failed replacement trees. Um, you know, we see a lot of trees being planted after a a development projects completed and those trees end up dying a year later. Um, and tha- that's very common. And so I think the, one of the goals of this tree protection ordinance would be to ensure that the replacement trees survive. And um, so there needs to be some accountability built into that, uh, because the owners getting the immediate, you know, financial benefit. Uh, I mean, I think there's a financial benefit to keeping a tree, but they're viewing it as a financial benefit to to removing the tree and that we want a replacement tree. So we want that replacement tree to survive. So I think the the how this is crafted will be really important to answer your question. And I know that central staff is is working on that so that we meet the goal of replacement trees surviving and um, but but make it fair.
Hey, thank you.
That's great.
It for me.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. And I realize, one of the amendments that I uh, that I thought would be included today, but wa- was not, and I'd like to daylight for the public so that there's no surprises. Um, is an amendment allowing more than two trees to be removed in three years if now this is the big if, if the lot has appropriate lot uh tree canopy coverage. And so in in Portland, it's my understanding that this is the case and their lot cover, their tree canopy coverage for that lot, the threshold is forty percent of the lot is covered. I had started with sixty percent, so saying that if the lot has sixty percent canopy coverage, more than two trees can be removed in three years. This comes from watching uh a neighbor's house. The neighbor was about ninety-eight years old and I don't think that they had maintained their trees for probably forty years. Um, and the new owners have come in and they are doing some basic just basic maintenance. And what I'm noticing is that they could potentially remove three to four trees and there is not going to be an impact on the canopy. Now, how is this, you might ask? It is because the trees are so grown together that there is an upper, middle and lower canopy. And the health of this forest is actually diminished by having so many trees close to each other. And so I haven't figured out all of the details on this. It's still a work in progress. Um, but this is where I'm I'm hoping to find a way to, when there is an appropriate canopy coverage for a lot, allow for good forestry maintenance to those trees. So just wanted to highlight for everyone here. With that, is there any further discussion? Um, I'll just kind of note, we are, we are at that that transition point in this legislation where we are moving away from the bill as introduced to the bill as in, as amended. Um, I foresee some tough conversations. And I really, again, go back to civility, um, go back to not impugning people's motives because all of us as public servants are working to best represent the the residents of Seattle. Um, I am just completely disgusted by some of the behavior that I've seen in our city this week. Um, maybe that's why I'm a little bit more punchy on this. So we're going to have uh some tough conversations. We've added extra time to the committee, meeting urban forestry's request. Um, and we're going to take our time to get through this and get this right. And not everyone's going to be happy because there are some very different viewpoints out here. And I think that it's important to recognize that a final product might not make everyone happy and will still be good policy for our city.
I appreciate that tone and um, I recognize that you're working really hard and really trying to to move this through.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. With that, we have four more public hearings in the Land Use Committee, so continue to speak during public comment. We will probably keep uh meetings where we're doing work to one minute. Um, and we'll have two minutes at the public hearing on Monday at ten thirty AM. As for this, this concludes the Friday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting, special meeting of the Land Use Committee. Happy Earth Day tomorrow. Our next Land Use Committee is just a public hearing on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at ten thirty AM, followed by a uh, a special land use meeting on the twenty-four, actually, it's not special, uh, April twenty-fourth at two PM, uh, followed by May fourth at nine thirty AM and potentially at two PM that afternoon. Thank you for attending. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.